Also, I'm just Catherine Jean.
I'm Owen.
Trying to do a review of that. So here, okay. All right, I'm gonna have to make a list, people, so. So I'm seeing Christine Mooney, AMO four side.
So John Cody.
And please. Now, so again. Go ahead, sorry.
All right. I'll second. Call me Jordan, please. Now, let's see. Look at Mark Herman, Josh and I, Steve knows where they're all excused. First item, consideration of the meeting minutes from October twenty six, twenty twenty two. Does anyone have anything? Well, no, it wasn't approved. Second, all in favor? Aye. Consideration of the meeting minutes from November ninth, twenty twenty two. We don't have a quorum. Okay, we'll table that till next meeting. Business, sick plane review. SPI twenty twenty two dash one seven map one twelve lot fifty five eight. BDBC Holdings LLC and Bobby Graves DBA copy Monte Alto. Monte Alto, site plan review. Looking for approval of a restaurant in the Village Center District. One of. Good evening. Before you begin, um, I need to disclose that I'm one of your butters.
Sure.
Um. I'm, I'm. Happy to sit here and be as impartial as I can. But the decision is up to all the rest of the board. One can ask me to step down and you can ask me to step down.
Instead, I'll make a motion that we allow OJ to stay.
I'll second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right.
So it's up to the, you know.
So I, I have just potential conflict, but I want to disclose that Mr. Graves and I have a business relationship. Or, you know, haven't, don't see him on a regular basis and I haven't discussed his application whatsoever.
You want us to run the meeting?
I might.
I'd want to ask you, do you have any objection with Jim?
Um, no, I didn't.
Okay, I'll, I'll second the motion. Okay, all in favor?
Aye. And then, so, so the applicant has no problem with either one? No. OJ, um, Alpine Adventures, correct?
Correct.
Yep, okay, just all clear.
Yep. Go ahead.
All right, well, um, just a follow up to kind of the preliminary discussion. Um, I think the big thing was parking. Coming up the square footage for private versus open, right? Um, and approvals for. Um, the state, food license application, which they approved, now we're just waiting inspection, which I'm not going forward with until. I get the technical lesson. Um, and a floor plan. For the, uh, cavity space. So really what I'm seeking is approval for up to twenty eight seats. And I'm not sure if you guys get the spreadsheet, break down all the square footage relevant to each business. In the building, um, with gross versus net. And the breakdown calculations for necessary parking for everybody but. Coffee shop and then independently coffee shop is broken down.
Dumpster, is that going to be a new dumpster? Is that already there?
It's a dumpster. Yeah, and if you need to increase capacity, you will. And that's a, um, just so I'm clear, that is going to be, um, bear proof type.
Yeah, okay. Any of the board members have any questions? Okay, no, all right, let's open it up to public comment.
So moved.
Would you want to accept the application first? Oh, I was gonna get comment and get the, go through the app. Oh, okay, all right. Okay, move. Second, second, all in favor?
Aye.
Would anyone like to speak on this application? Okay.
Motion closed, public comment.
Second, all in favor? Aye, all right. Go through the application. Scale, not less than one inch equals forty inches provided. Submit twelve copies of blue and black line prints provided. Submit a digital copy of the print provided. Date title North Arrow and scale provided. Name and address of the owner and applicant provided. Name and address of the licensed land surveyor provided. And accurate plan of the site showing existing natural features, including watercourses, water bodies, various types of vegetation. Topographical features and any other features which should be considered in the site design process. Not applicable. The type, extent and location of existing and proposed landscape and open space areas indicating what existing landscape and open space areas will be retained, not applicable. Anyone has any objection, any question, just stop waiting. Existing and proposed topography of the site at two foot contour intervals, not applicable. Soil mapping units and unit boundaries, not applicable. Blood plane identification areas, not applicable. Location of all buildings within fifty feet of the site and the location of all intersecting roads or driveways and utilities, water, sewer, electrical and cable and telephone within two hundred feet. Not applicable. Location of all buildings, all building setbacks required by the land use plan ordinance, not applicable. Location of district boundaries, including wetlands, not applicable. Lot area, street frontage and requirements for minimum lot size, not applicable. Location of off-street parking and loading spaces with a layout of the parking indicated, provided. Location with curving and type of access ways and egress ways, provided. Location of all existing and proposed deed restriction covenants, et cetera, not applicable. Surveyed property lines showing their deflection angles, distances, radius, length of box, control angles along property lines and monument locations and names were all about us, not applicable. If the development is a subdivision, then lines and names of all proposed streets, lands and ways of reasons intended to be dedicated for public use, all subdivision regulations shall apply, it's not applicable. Plan views of all buildings, either existing or proposed, with this new size, location and floor elevations indicated. Not applicable, did provide a floor plan of the building. Um, difficult elevation view of all existing and proposed buildings indicated in a heightened signing, not applicable. The type and location of solid waste facilities, um, we did provide that, the dumpster on the plan. Location, size and design of proposed signs and other advertising or instructional devices provided. Stormwater drainage plan showing the existing and proposed methods of handling stormwater runoff, not applicable. Direction of flow of the runoff through the use of arrows, not applicable. Location, elevation and size of all catch basins, dry wells, drainage, ditches, swales, retention basins and storm sort of source, not applicable. Engineered calculation used to determine drainage requirements, not applicable. Size and proposed location of water supply and storage facilities and provision for future expansion of storage and water facilities, not applicable. The size and location of existing and proposed public and private utility connections, including provisions for fire protection, not applicable. Location type of all existing and proposed lighting facilities, not applicable. Copies of all applicable submitted. Copies of all applications submitted for applicable state approvals and permits, not applicable, but it's submitted copy of health food service license application. Uh, performance guarantee of bond, not applicable. Illustration of effect on pedestrian and automotive circulation, uh, we didn't check that, but it's not applicable. Illustration of fencing walls and buffers provided. If waivers for non-compliance to DOT construction, specification for roads, parking, streets, drainage and bridges will be required, nothing checked, but it's not applicable. Same, we have any questions? Yeah, I do. Is the, um. Parking lot currently straight as we see it on this, on this layout?
I, very, very similar. I think there's, um, other than having a diagonal, we did, I think I did provide or originally we provided. An aerial photo of the current.
No.
So.
Okay.
All right.
I do have a point for basically that.
Yeah. Yeah.
This point for space is.
Yeah.
You'll just know that the, uh, basically the northwest parking spots are not at a forty five.
Right. Okay. Is there six of them?
Um, I do believe so, yes. Yeah. You can keep that for file.
Okay. Carol. Okay. Of all your butters, a final. Let's say I'm, I'm good with that. I don't. Yeah. Think there's any big deal about them being perpendicular or, or diagonal.
No, no, there's plenty of journey radius.
As long as people can see. Where to park.
Yeah, yeah, they're there. They're all painted up and, um, I actually think that. In this case, the nineties, um, orientated better for fleeing out. And an exit versus a forty five, because they're gonna be.
Backing out.
Air towards your direction.
Yeah.
Right, so.
Towards to the fence.
Right, exactly, so.
Yeah. All right, have all your butters been notified? All right, is there a motion to accept the application, all?
So move.
Second, all in favor? Aye. All right, any other questions on this?
No, I don't.
Is there a motion to approve it as presented?
I'll make a motion to approve it for that.
I'll second that. Anyone discussion? All in favor? Aye. Aye. Anyone opposed? Seth. Good. All right, good luck.
Appreciate that very much, yeah. Porter Avenue inward row, but.
Next week?
I wish. Soon enough, soon enough.
Good luck.
Thank you very much. Happy Thanksgiving.
Good too.
Bruce Hall.
Minus subdivision. Subdivision twenty twenty two dash zero six, map one fourteen lot forty nine, Legary trustees, plus Connolly minus subdivision. Applicant property owners, Raymond A. Legary and Pauline A. Legary trustees, Raymond A. and Pauline A. Legary trust, care Susan L. Smith, one oh seven Howville Road, Baton, New Hampshire, zero three seven eight five. Raymond A. Legary and Pauline A. Legary trustees, Raymond A. and Pauline A. Legary trusts. Twenty nine oh seven Southeast Eagle Drive, Point Saint Lucie, Florida. Three four nine eight four, Agent Ethan Connolly. Sixteen pilot ab sale in New Hampshire, the zero three zero seven nine. Surveyor James Alva Valley, LLS, Two Starwood Drive, Hampstead, New Hampshire, zero three eight four one. Property Mansion Hill. Land only map one point four lot forty nine, sixteen point seven acres, rural residential, our district. Minimum lot size is fifteen thousand square feet, or point three four acres. Proposal create two parcels, map one one four. Lots forty nine point three, create one lot of six point eight one acres, map one one four lot forty nine point three, create one lot of ten point ten acres. See after this. One up.
If you, you can, um, identify yourself just with the tape, because Judy's gonna be watching the tape in a minute.
Sure. E. Connolly and Kyle McManus. Um, designated applicant for the, uh, Legary parcel, tax now, one nineteen lot forty nine.
Mr. Jim?
Yes, sir.
Do we have a letter from a owner stating that?
Um, I believe that they have signed the application for the subdivision.
Yeah, I know, but the, the rule requirement letter stating that. Before someone can be represented, they usually have, you have a letter from Legary's?
Yeah, it was, and so.
Well, I know they sign it, but it requires a look.
Okay, yeah, because technically Legary's the applicant.
Right, so Legary's needed to sign a letter, as I've done in the past for other occupations. Do we have something like that?
And here it says the undersigned owner may designate. The agent, uh, to carry out the application process to.
There you go, just, we, we have. We typically have a letter from the owner.
Okay, well, he did sign the application for subdivision.
Well, I, I understand that, but it'll be represented by someone. Our rules of procedure, call it that, I believe.
Section five around the application, it says, Mr. Ethan Connolly's addresses that, uh, town in New Hampshire is hereby designated as a person to whom all communications to a subdivision may be addressed. And person of whom legal process may be served in connection with the process or that.
Okay. So Pauline and Raymond Legary did sign that application.
What's that? The application for subdivision, they did sign it. They did sign it, but.
And they, and they filled in Ethan Connolly's name and information as the designated agent to carry out the application.
That's different than what we.
Says the end of, the end of sign order may designate an agent, relative surveyor, real estate broker, et cetera. To carry out the application process and to whom all related communications may be addressed.
Says they may.
So I think that's an organization, that looks like an organization to me.
So that's, that would be how I'd read number five.
Well, we've just done, done it differently in the past. We've had, typically had a letter stating that. As I'm saying.
Okay, I guess.
But we're just, I'm just trying to keep things same with everybody.
Well, I think, I think we have, it's like all zoning matters, you know, we do that because the application is not set up this way.
It doesn't matter to me. I'm just, I'm just bringing up, everybody else still okay with it?
I'm glad, I guess. The question is hypothetically, if one of the little Gary's object to the subdivision, can we? It won't be recorded or is it done, is it a done deal? After tonight?
Say that again?
Suppose either Raymond or Pauline Legary somehow say, no, it's not what we agreed to. You're under the subdivision if we get.
Well, they signed it. This is an authorization right on the face.
I'm not, I'm not saying it's not, I'm just asking a question.
I don't know.
Okay.
Would they file, uh, appeal?
The appeal process is where, where we're getting tricky.
I mean, they, they also received notice.
Right.
They, they have, um, the applicant and the property owner both received and a butter notice. Um, so they have notice.
Okay, I, I think I'm comfortable proceeding. I agree. All right. Go ahead.
All right, uh, as stated on the, uh, designated, uh, applicant for the Legary parcel tax now, uh, one one nine lot forty nine. Um. The, uh, plans are shown, currently the parcel is about sixteen point nine acres, sixteen point nine one acres. And we're proposing to divide it in half to create one new lot, which would be designated as lot. Uh, sorry, map one fourteen lot forty nine dash three. That lot would front on, uh, Mansion Hill Drive and Valley View Wing. And it'd be approximately six point nine acres. Leaving the, uh. Original lot of, uh. Ten point one acres, uh, which would front at the end of, uh, Waybridge lane. Um, we had it recently surveyed and the exhibit's done by, uh, Levell, so it gets out of Hampstead. Uh, Tim Wood, who inherits, had an ongoing heart condition. Been in and out of the hospital, so. Um, I can go. Uh, I need to go through the check list about how you got them.
No, just explain what you wanted to be.
Okay, it's not, we're not asking for any building approvals, anything like that, no new roads, we're literally here just to cut this parcel in half. It's simple.
Okay. And where's the, um, access to map one fourteen lot forty nine?
Uh, White Birch. Yeah.
So on White Birch, is that showing the, the paved area ends?
Yeah, then it does end a little shy. It's, it's like a private travel road, uh, that goes way back into the parcel.
Okay.
There's a gate there as well.
It shows that on locusts is going right to it. Right there.
Yep. It's not shown. White Birch Lane's not shown on any of the, the first or second map. That I can see, is it?
No.
Uh, well, the, the first map. Uh, yes, or it's, you know.
He wants the road, we want White Birch Road.
It's a town road.
Town road?
Yeah.
Will probably be shown on the match, even though it's on up here.
Right, sorry.
Yeah, but it doesn't go all the way to the end, right?
It doesn't, obviously the town right away, that's the actual end pavement.
That's actually.
This is the gate. So there's, there is a, uh. Like I said, gravel road there, but the, the end of the right.
But that's go all the way to the.
Yes, sir. Probably see a little better on the second page. No, that's pitch. Little bit, I can tell that dimension there.
And that is a pound hole.
Yes, sir.
Where is the?
Uh.
This line in here? That's the vision, that's all, that's it. Well.
So, um, what's the extent of the right away? How wide is it? White Birch Lane?
I believe it's twelve feet, but the right away. Well, there's two questions. The right away, which is shown, it is a, uh. How do I describe it? There's an heat vent. Is, are you referring to the heat vent or the right away?
The right away. I guess my question is how much, how much road crunchage is it gonna be on White Birch Lane? Those, so.
Um. It's thirty, thirty three feet. Um. Plus twenty four.
And that's, I think that's, that's adding up to two right angles?
Yeah. So, I mean, if, if you. If you wanted to. Put a road in there, I mean, if, if, we're not intending to clear road in there, so I don't know that.
I mean, you can have to have access to the lot, then somehow.
Yeah, it does. I mean, the road goes in there, uh, and four, and you left.
I was distracted by, um. You know, showing them where the gate is, and I just, I went to sit near. Um, the White Birch Lane, uh, on the front page. On the town, I'm going past. Down from town, I have to go past there.
So you're saying where the pavement ends?
I don't know that.
I don't know that either. Because it, it could show up on our tax notes.
Okay.
If we have, town road goes past this. Couldn't show up on the tax notes, and I don't think it goes past it.
Well, it, the, the first, uh. Dark line is the end of pavement, this, the inter line is the right way. So you'll see it up here, too. This is the right way, but it's not actually paved, so that's the pavement that shows the right way. Same down here, this is the right way.
This is the right way?
Yes.
You must have the thing at them?
Correct.
Probably should be all clear. You know, showing where the town owns, puts it down right away, you know. I would think so. There's no questions.
So this.
So we really can't make a line. We can't really approve a landlocked parcel.
Right.
It's not landlocked.
By size?
It's not landlocked due to the town right away.
Well, that's, that's a question right now.
Yeah, it is.
Well, no, uh, right away runs right to the parcel additionally in that zone, you, uh, the town does not have any requirements for road crunch. It has requirements for fifteen thousand square feet of land, like you doubt.
I mean, I understand that, but if parcel's landlocked.
Which, which it's not, again, it has frontage on, not only does it not need frontage. But it does have frontage on Waybridge line.
I mean, it needs, it needs access, you're trying, casualty.
And furthermore, the. Um, sorry, maybe you guys, your local, you have known the, uh, the gentleman that owns the parcel, the new house at the end of Waybridge. Uh, his lot line starts at the exact same. Uh. Dividing line.
Okay.
We're looking at, you know, it's literally the same, he has the same access, I guess, is what I'm saying, Chamberlain's, I believe.
Yeah. So when that, so when that was subdivided off and approved, it would have been based on the same. Same road access. You're talking about his one fourteen fifty?
Uh, fourteen forty eight.
Forty eight.
That's where the new home is.
I've got Chamberlain like this.
Um, yeah, I think he's right. Um, I thought John Chamberlain merged, um, one fourteen fifty with one fourteen forty eight. Maybe I'm mistaken.
Carol, the, the. Right, didn't, didn't he buy some additional land for his house lot and add them together?
The town tax map shows it. Going to the end of that. The fish mouth.
Okay, so it's a town right away, it's just not paved.
Correct, that's.
So, okay. Nothing says it's not to be paved. Right, so they have, just so they have access, so they have access via White Birch Lane.
We have that. That's why they were playing, to see how.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Or fish mouth thing is there?
Yeah.
That's the same way.
Yeah.
For the corner, so.
Okay, so that is.
But you see where it goes.
Okay, great.
Yeah.
Okay, so it shows that on the tax map.
Okay. Notice of one fifty, one forty eight, are they combined?
Yeah, I think it has one.
Yeah, they are combined.
We're.
Two seventy.
Yeah.
Okay, so the other thing is on the survey that, um, have one fourteen and fifty, one fourteen and forty eight are combined, they're, they were merged. And so their, the name of this lot was one fourteen fifty. Of the whole thing, those two together.
Oh.
Right.
One fourteen forty eight, one fourteen.
So if you look at this as one fourteen forty eight twice. There's two lots numbered one fourteen forty eight. There's two lots numbered one fourteen forty-eight.
I said, on front page says one fourteen forty-eight and then says one fourteen fifty.
Yeah, let's see.
So you look at one fourteen fifty. And you go, and you go straight up over White Bridge Lane, the next lot up is one fourteen forty-eight as well.
Yeah.
But not any, not not anymore, so let me just try it. Okay, so, so this doesn't exist in work, it's all part of this.
All right.
Yeah.
And so this is okay.
Okay, so this is just a typo here.
That's the lane, that forty-eight is zero.
He probably went off uh just to GIS and I don't know, it's been updated, so.
Yeah, I mean, that's why we just, you know, we want to have diligence here.
So he does, yeah, it's not landlocked, because it goes.
Right, it's not landlocked, okay.
Yeah.
All done.
Yes, thank you.
You can ask your survey to correct that.
Yes, sir, no problem.
Okay. Does anyone have any other questions at this time?
I know I didn't check was. I didn't check was. It appears that. So that this must be the pavement going up to the top of Mansion Hill, unless and looks like it ends before the property line, is that? Does that mean the same line that one up there, the, that the town right away goes all the way to the end, or is it just the end of the pavement?
Where are you talking?
At the very top right here. I mean, if if the survey's correct, it's showing this, the town right away, like right up to the boundary.
Right, okay.
That's.
It's just not paved, same thing at the time.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, as long as it shows that, it was right, try to sort of clear those and just show that it's a town owned property that goes all the way to to it.
Sure, yeah, so it looks like. The six point eight one parcel has access for Mansion Hill and Valley View.
Right.
Yeah, just make it consistent, make it consistent with what the town uh tax map shows. So there's no, no question there that. The parcel does go.
Would you like the road not show, the pavement not show? Because the. The way that he shows it, he shows the edge of pavement, and then he shows the outer line is actually the town. So he could either not show the pavement. Or he could. Show it the way he did, which is then.
See, I think the pavement is good, but maybe um maybe what he could do is just call this right away here. This area.
I love you, yeah.
Yeah.
And this, you know, just to make it clear that that's part of the right way. I'm just thinking that'll take care of it, the pavement is something. Anything for asking for you. Um. Anyway, I think the name, before date there, I don't know, maybe someone.
I'll do whatever you guys want, I guess I'm gonna ask your question, it's gonna sound stupid, um, are we not here to get an approval? And it is turning into a.
We have made a decision on approval, yeah.
Okay, all right, I didn't, I didn't.
No, you're here for approval tonight.
Yeah.
Something for roll.
I mean, if everything, everything goes okay, you can get a conditional approval with these. You know guarantee it's gonna be. So, do you have any else at this time?
No, no.
Okay. Yeah, do you have anything else?
Excellent.
Okay.
The. The dotted lines all reference. The little areas are are wetlands, is that wetland that are identified?
Yes, sir, and then uh your your ordinance also asks for setback from the wetlands. Um, so it's a seventy-five foot, you give a twenty-five foot, you're not disturbed, and then seventy-five foot no bill.
So is that been included in the?
Uh, the existing lines or not? Uh. So we did, it's not on the front page, but when the order, you tell please. So seventy-five foot, that's just seventy-five.
Okay.
We had, we had all the wetland flags uh by ten four.
The math wasn't, didn't show it or the. It says wetland, but I was up, I was having a hard time figuring out what was what. Okay, because it looks different than the.
I guess he's got it on the legend or on the tie, so it's a uh dash dot, dash dot is wetland. If you want me to have him in large with that all.
I think I just put, usually put just the whole thing with all the little trees on over in the legend, that were there, it goes.
Yep, with the sort of dash dot, dash dot. Yeah, but this is the setback, so. Wetland setback, I can. Hey, uh, whatever you guys like, I can actually just uh in large, that legend, because it's kind of hard to read. Without all, if you prefer labels on the wetland itself.
I think it needs to be clear, what's the wetland and what's this, what's the.
Little flowers are trees that they. That's usually what's on the legend, it shows wetland, but anything else, okay. It's not the dash and dot, it's usually the little burny thing that shows up, it's in a little square with a four or five of that. And that will show you that's all what what it is there.
Okay, otherwise it looks like a whole lot.
Carol, do you have anything else at the moment? You, Carol.
Oh, me. Um, no, but I I did have a question about um, you know, the the people who are planning to um. Who are. Are planning to purchase that, the lower lot or peeler. Um. And we don't, I don't know if it's. Accurately represents, well. They want, you know, I don't.
Do we need top graph? Pography on this, nor to.
Well, the subdivision, we're gonna write and build on it.
Well, yeah, I'm sorry. Just asking, I'd have to look at the application and see if they have pages and stuff, but.
It was, it was a waiver, um, again, because we're not promoting to for any additional building last week, come back to that, um, so we're the waiver.
But you're asking for a waiver, where to do?
We're asking for.
Yeah, we're not gonna get to that, I'm gonna.
There were um. The way you guys said classified it, there was a minor subdivision, which I think is three lots or less, uh, still a much less detail. Versus if you, you know, trying to do four or five.
All right, does anyone have anything else at the moment? Is there a motion to open public comment, so moved second?
Second.
All in favor, I.
I.
When any members of public like to speak?
Uh, Frank Bishido, we're about sixteen Valley View Lane.
Hi, Frank.
We've been working with. You can refer, oh, wow, here. We'd like. Yeah, I think there's adjustments in you remain. Well, just the least.
Okay.
Uh, going forward, we plan on, you know. Heard me speak a little bit, we love Lincoln, we love the fact that the green area, we wanna preserve this land in its current state. Um, we approached. Even and. We've come to an agreement, should this get approved, we would purchase ten point one acres.
Okay, okay, congratulations.
Home and valid dealing, we're just. Gonna stay exactly the way that. And we're funded on the life, anyway.
Okay, and you said some minor adjustments, anything more than what we're talking about, did you have any?
I wanna bring it up here, that I think there is some.
Yeah, I wouldn't ask.
Lot lines.
It's been being recommended.
Yeah, okay, so just the housekeeping I talked about.
Yeah, one of the.
That's, that's been doing the applications, so.
Right. Okay, all right, thank you. Anyone else like to speak? No, there's a motion to close public comment?
So moved second.
All in favor?
I.
Let's go through the application. I'll run through if anyone has any question, just stop me. I have the application, tweeted application for minus subdivision. Names and addresses of the waters provided. Application and notice fees and a check payable to the town of Lincoln, provided. Twelve copies of preliminary layout or final plan as required for a particular application, use a tax list to review maps, complete this, completeness, provided.
Yeah, twelve copies.
Carol, we have.
I'll have one.
No, I'm, that's twelve, I didn't know if they need me.
No, it's exactly right.
All right. All right, site survey map, four copies of maps at a scale not small than one inch to one hundred feet, which should have the following information. Name of subdivision, provided, name and address of owner subdivision, provided. Size of site in acres, well, nothing to check, they have provided it. Existence streets with names and root numbers, designation, again, nothing's checked, but it's um. Been provided. Additional subdivision information either shown on plan or provided separately. Minus subdivision not, not applicable, does anyone have any issue with that, they're not divided? Okay. Final plot required for minor and minor subdivisions, for minor and major subdivisions. Survey and engineer provided, date, north arrow and scale, name and address of the waters provided. Import natural features from natural resource inventory, wetlands as defined by HIS map. Hydric soils, wetlands, overlays on et cetera, provided. Building and setback lines to include setbacks from wetlands, provided. Land to be dedicated for public use, not applicable, percentage of site in fields and in woods, one hundred percent. Property lines, existing buildings, historic sites and structures, provided. Existence streets with names or root designations, provided. Size of site in acres with number of acres in village residential district and in general use district, provided. Topographic contours and watercourses both seasonal and year round, they've asked for waiver. See, anyone have any issues on that? Thank you. Why, why don't we go through it? Why don't we go through the application and we can vote on waivers? Wells municipal water sources within one hundred and fifty yards of site, asking for waiver. Soils, they've asked for waiver.
Are are these? Are there wells up there now?
There's one well that shows. Existing pump wells, with ten inch of line.
What page are you looking at?
Last page. With a rectangle.
Yeah, existing pump house. So, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, that's not it, so, uh. This is a, the old Gary property, then doesn't have lots of those wells on it, probably shouldn't be shown, shouldn't those be shown?
They're, they're all decommissioned wells.
They're all decommissioned wells, but I think it should be shown on the. One of. The plan.
Yeah.
Usually when you see a a site plan, it shows wells that have been in the past, I know, for example, ones like that were down on the um solid waste facility. When you look on plan, if we were all, all of those usually that they're located on them, on site plan, it should be already plowed them.
There. I don't wanna speak out of turn, but it'll go ahead, people like, uh, the reason why you wanna show wells on there is for like water runoff and thing where these are.
Or contamination, if if even though they're decommissioned, are they? If they could be contaminated somewhere down the road or something like that, they can, that where they, when you see it on the plan. It's like, everything is shown to whoever owns, they know that it's there, it's on a plan, right here, you can't see that there's laws on it, so.
So would we put uh designate as decommissioned.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, be disidentifying, maybe it's surveyed, bought them in and and uh, put them in there to decommission, that where they're. They're, they've been identified. Usually that's what's done.
All right, soils, he's asked for waiver. Town consulting engineering reimbursement fee. Nothing, do we need any? I don't think we need subdivision, I don't think we need any to review it.
I mean, this is us.
Tax map changes fee.
We, we have not, you know, we have not charged them.
Okay, that's fine. Site location mapped around at a larger scale and film on the site survey or proposed subdivision map with tax map page and parcel numbers. So they've put not applicable for any of this because it's not a minor subdivision. On four. All items, so there. We don't have an item three, Carol. Is there a pages? With the page three. Goes from page three to page five.
Uh, it's mine's on the back, but.
All right, I have, I have a blank. Now we have page four.
All right, and we may should take care of.
Yeah, I don't know page four either.
Oh, page four is. Before page three in our packets.
Oh, it's just back.
It's just backwards, we got.
All right, and we've already gone.
Okay, yeah, yeah, you're right.
Okay.
All right. That makes more sense.
Got me.
All right, twelve paper copies and one mila, no smaller than twenty-four inches by thirty-six inches, provided. All information described in preliminary, except that the drainage, road plans and profiles, water and other utilities shall be final, that's provided. Name and addresses of all individual owners and or corporations of lands involved, provided, names and addresses of all the waters provided. Existent building streets, rights of way, streams and easements provided, natural features in the vicinity of the affected land, provided. Name, address and seal of surveyor or engineer, provided. A small location map indicating parcels in in relation to major streets and intersections, the tax sheet and parcel numbers and the zoning districts. Provided. Bearings and distances of entire property and lot lines based on an on-the-ground survey plus topography and five-foot intervals. So they provided the bearings and distances and the lot lines, but they're asking for waiver on the topography and five-foot intervals. Lot areas and dimensions in square feet or acres. Provided, lot, lots numbers and lot numbers, lots numbered in accordance with town tax map policy, provided. Statement of responsibility and liability for streets, roads and their maintenance, they're asking for waiver. Estimate of cost and required, estimate of cost of required improvements and statement concerning bond or other security. Asking for waiver, WSPC subdivision approval, we're asking for waiver. State driveway permit, if any, ask for waiver. So state road anyway. Legal documents for homeowners association or other or other arrangements for property and utility management, not applicable. Subdivision regulation compliance statement. They provided space for board endorsements provided. All right. Go back to the winner items. So page three, we're asking for. Topographic contours and watercourses both seasonal and year round, they've asked for waiver. See, anyone have any issues with that?
No.
Okay, no.
All right, is there a mo- a motion to grant the waiver?
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
I.
All right, Wells Municipal Water Sources within one hundred and fifty yards of site, I think they've already discussed that they want to put those on there.
Yes, right.
Okay. So they can provide that. The soils, they ask for waiver of the soils. Um, is there a motion to grant that waiver?
So moved second.
All in favor?
I.
I. So they're asking for waiver of the topography in five-foot intervals, does anyone have any issues with that, any questions?
The only question is, is it necessary at this point, I mean, does it need to be?
I mean, I, I mean, they just really cut the lot in two, so.
Yeah, I mean, I, I don't know.
I think that's important, if they were building roads and had driveway accesses and, but this is just.
Right, just making a line, hey.
I was just thinking of, if it's. If you're dividing it up, it's the the lines of responsibility between one lot and another lot, as far as where. Where drainage may go and who's responsible for it, you know what I mean, so if the drain is from lot. Forty-nine three goes on to lot forty-nine. Somewhere around there, who, you know, where the responsibility is with the topo and stuff like that, i- if you don't think that that's an issue right now, then.
I mean, I don't think they're gonna do anything that's gonna increase the runoff here until they actually build. I, I mean, I don't think they're gonna do anything that's gonna increase the runoff here until they actually build a house.
Correct, I agree with that, I'm just.
Yeah, I know, you just, we're having this discussion. All right.
I'll make a motion for waiver.
Okay, I'll second.
All right, all in favor? Um, so waiver, statement of responsibility and liability for streets, roads and their maintenance, I mean.
Do they need a waiver for that, is that just not applicable?
Really, I was just gonna say they're not building any roads.
Right.
Same with it. Hell, really, it's not applicable.
The next one is not applicable.
W S P C C subdivision approvals, that's not applicable.
So. The other one, so I'm a little confused there.
On page five, item M.
Yeah, I know, you're on page five now?
Hmm, yep.
Okay. Which one are you on?
M, W S P C subdivision approval.
Yeah.
Not applicable here. Um, state driveway permit is not applicable, it's two town roads. Um, legal documents for homeowners association or other arrangements for property and utility management, again, there's no homeowners association, so it's really not applicable.
Do you need, instead of, uh, state driveway permit, do you need a town driveway permit?
I don't think, that comes when they pull the landers permit.
Yeah, when they, when they, when they come for.
Well, building permit, it's just one house.
Right.
Right.
That, that's where they built the, uh, driveway.
Just for one, okay, I'm fine.
All right, so that's it. Is there any questions on the application? Paul?
The, um. Ask for a waiver on J on page three, which was the top, got contours and water course, course is plus seasonal and year round. Um, and there's a waiver for H on page five. So, are, are there any stream of brooks or anything that are, should be delineated or shown on this? I mean, show, you show wetlands, I, I just didn't know if the, any streams or brooks should be shown as well.
The only actual like stream is shown down the bottom.
Okay, yep, on, on that one part, that's the only one.
There's, well, there's two kind of on the edge there and then one that runs down.
And that's one, yeah, very much, okay.
Like a guess that that's what it is, but I just wanna.
It's delineated as wetlands, I can have them call it out as a stream.
Yeah.
Yeah, probably should.
All right.
I know where it all goes and.
Well, we have some, some conditions of approval, um. Show the right ways from Mansion Hill Drive, Valley U Lane and White Birch Lane. Um, show the decommissioned wells on the plan. And also fix, show one fourteen forty-eight and one fourteen fifty is being merged into lot, and now being called ma- a lot, one fourteen fifty. Um, are there any other conditions?
I'll make a motion when we approve the application.
To accept it as complete first, oh, yeah, let's do the application first, I'm sorry.
Except that's complete, yeah.
I'll second that, all right, all in favor?
Aye.
All right. So.
Now we need a motion to accept it with, with the waivers that Jimmy stated.
Yeah. I didn't have anything else.
I didn't either, so I make the motion that we, next, uh, approve the application for subdivision. As, as submitted with the waivers.
Okay, we're approving the application, not the subdivision yet.
We already approved the application.
We accepted the application, yeah, so we're gonna prove it with the conditions, right?
Right.
Showing the merged lots, the decommissioned wells and the town rightaways, okay, so anyone have anything else? All right.
I have, I don't know if you'd like me to run through what I, I had, uh, the wetlands kind of icon.
Yeah.
Almost like a fern.
Correct.
The right away labels for the three dead end street, uh, decommissioned well labels, the gate. Uh. Make a delineation for the actual stream as opposed to wetlands and then merge lots. Uh, fifteen forty-nine would be one lot.
Fifteen forty-eight.
Fifteen.
Right.
Fourteen forty-eight. Fourteen.
Oh, sorry, yeah.
Yeah, it's right, with the house line and then the.
So that's all we've been.
Fourteen, all right.
All right.
Yep.
Okay, and the, and the wetlands, um, separate. So, I'm gonna be in the hotel because of the, by, by the rules, the rules is that, that the wetland is as opposed to where the setback is.
Right, yeah. Okay, I'll, I'll have them, uh, like I said, increase the size of the legend too, just if you, yeah.
Okay, you made a motion to second it, yeah, all right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you guys very much, um, so now I, I made those changes through the Mylar.
Yes. Make sure things done.
Don't email that to you?
Yeah.
Okay, if we email that to you, that will.
Um, yeah, I'm gonna need, I'm gonna need three, uh, because it's all family.
So, continued later for Mylar, with a lot of stuff, but because town is such a favorite, problem of, of Mansion Hill.
Thank you, thank you guys very much.
Thank you. Continuing another business conceptual site plan review, conceptual twenty twenty-two dash fourteen, not one one eight. Lots zero zero two point one, presby T D A, T and T Mountain Investments LLC, the Patel Group. Looking for a new hotel, second conceptual after some adjustments subsequent to first conceptual. Let's see if Chris. What can I?
Myself, I'm Drew Queen, I'm the, um, project architect.
Hey, hey Drew.
I assume you have the packet with the, yeah, pretty running. Um, you came previously, we had discussed the aesthetic of the branded hotel the residents in. Um, feeling to the board was that the aesthetic is not fitting of the town, so we've made some adjustments there, came up with some ideas. Uh, we've got two color schemes presented for a conversation. And then also there are a number of items discussed regarding site plan in terms of. Uh, the parking and parking is derived from so many spaces per guest room and then also. Um, the lot coverage, so you'll see that is all addressed in this conceptual package. We're, we're showing an appropriate number of parking spaces for how many guest rooms that the hotels propose. And on the back page, you'll see, um, a lot of coverage is delineated in various. Colors, the calculations indicate that, uh, coverage is below the allowable.
Well. Okay, so were the parking spaces figured out? For this rooftop lounge, is there gonna be like a restaurant up there, I, I have that question was asked, then you asked last time, Jim. Um, are there parking spaces that are allotted for that rooftop lounge? Or is it just a place to go up there and sit and they're not gonna be, is it allowed bar food being served there, what's the vision for that?
Vision is it's part of the hotels, um, oftentimes a hotel has a lounge in the lobby for guests. This one just happens to be up on the roof, have a better view of the mountain, better view of surroundings, so.
Um, will it have food service or a bar or anything like that that's there?
There will be a bar up there, um, food service is yet to be determined.
Those, those spaces, are, are those spaces? You would need to figure those in to your, um, your parking requirements. But, but you're gonna, am I right, Jimmy?
I mean, I, I didn't catch on really.
You would, if they were gonna have a rooftop lounge, they would have to figure that in, and the lounge is gonna serve liquor or.
Yeah.
Those, those table spaces, the students would have to be figured into the parking.
Yes.
Parking.
Okay.
Yeah.
And I didn't see them when I was looking, so I, I, that's why I asked.
Okay. Did we have anything else?
Is there some, uh, proportion in which you guess, okay, certain percentage of the patrons of the rooftop are already in the hotel and already parked them up? In the parking lot, or how many?
No, it's a separate use.
Has it been to whole separate restaurants?
Yes.
Cause you could have people from the street, but then, you could have no, no guests there and you would have all. Additional parking. So I mean, you have to treat it like it's, it's. That's why, well, you could have a full hotel and no one using that, but it could be people off the street using it, so how do you, how do you?
Yeah, I mean, so.
The other, go the other way and just say, well, fifty percent of them and you don't, and then everybody comes in off the street, okay, then you don't have no parking.
So the other approach would be to say, okay, it's only for guests and it's, uh, access from the elevator is controlled with your card.
That's fine.
Which I don't know if that'll be the case or not, but, okay. Good tale.
Yeah, we'll have to, we'll have to discuss when it comes to full site plan review, this, this is all a conceptual, so it's not binding.
No, but I mean, I think that would. If they would just tell you that it was all allowed to use it.
Yeah.
That, that was a little simplified, yeah. But that's similar to, um, some of these other hotels where they serve breakfast. To guests only, we don't require parking for, for, for that, and there's many hotels that will do that and they meet the, the parking requirement. Right, it's considered and, and still used to the hotel, I don't know, if, if, if you did open it up to the public, it would. Seem like a percentage of them would come from within.
But.
Um. I don't know if there's any flexibility in our rules about parking.
Think they have to go to the Z B A because that's part of it, there's, within the ordinance, not part of site, some site plan regulations. Parking is within the ordinance itself.
But only if you're looking for a variance from, so, if they're not looking for a variance from it, then they.
Right, yeah.
They can stay within the planning board.
Right. Um, so, how? How many floors are, you have four occupied floors with rooms and one with the garage?
Well, I haven't. There's two underground garage levels and then there's three floors of rooms, um. And the three floors are visible from Main Street, so the eve on Main Street is under thirty-five feet. As the grade falls away to the back. Uh, we're tucking some parking levels into the hillside within the grade.
Thanks. Just, if I'm reading this correctly. On the page that says. Level one, hotel entry and mid parking garage.
Yep.
All of those parking spaces are. Is, is that above ground parking or is that? Below the grade you can see from the road?
Uh, the, the U shape is the building. And then where that circle number forty-five is, those parking spaces are all on grade. So you drive in off the road, you come up slightly to the sort of plateaued parking and then. As you traverse, like as you're looking at the sheet, it's towards the left, but if you were driving into the hotel, it'd be toward your right.
Right.
There'll be a, uh, the grade will slope down, that driveway slopes down. To the lower parking.
Mm-hmm.
And then. To the, you're looking at the entry to the hotel, to its left, there's a drive in at that same level of the main. Hotel into the other level apartment. Yeah, so that drives down lower.
Basically all seventy of those lower ones.
Oh, there's the forty-five, I was looking.
All of the seventy spots are in the lower parking?
Yes, there's seventy in mid level parking and there's eighty in the lower level. So the lower level would be at elevation roughly eight fourteen grade, so you're basically kind of doing this kind of thing, right, over, under. From left and right side.
If you look at the side view of it, that would show that.
Yeah.
Set facts, that's all right, um, the water and sewer, would, again, that would have to be.
Yeah, so you need a water capacity study, salt capacity study.
Okay.
Water and sewer capacity study, I'm not sure if this, the entrance of this is off of Main Street. So, if D O T.
D O T would be involved.
They're involved.
Every, every development on Main Street, the D O T is now. Needs, needs, they, we need their approval.
But the little other one isn't, but D O T gets involved anyway.
Correct.
Right.
They control that intersection of.
Because of the, because of the additional flow traffic on to Main Street.
I mean, they did, like they did it for the, um, medical center.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, which is way back off Main Street, but it, but it all depends.
Dennis had to do it for his.
Yeah, River Walk.
River Walk.
Yeah.
Is there a particular T O T district that this is?
District one.
Carol can give you.
District one.
So you have the water and sewer capacity study, you have, um, D O T and then you have your stormwater management program.
Yeah.
And along with that, you also have, um. You'd probably best to check with a fire chief about turning raises for fire vehicles getting in and out of there. Uh, what else? Sign as we.
The, the. Parking easements from the abutting property. Um, have they? Signed off or agreed to or s- even seen this configuration?
No, we're leaving their, their lot completely alone.
Yeah.
So thi- this is unchanged from what it is right now?
Yep, that's exactly how they're laying it is right now.
Yeah, the, 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 the slowly thing is that the, the, you know, description means then is more open handed, so. When it comes up on Dennis's plan, um, the parking spaces to be actually blacktopped. Or what are shown on here, but was quite a bit bigger, um, but so I don't know. Whether, you know, he chose or they put X number parking spaces on there, but still had, I mean, I don't know what the. Instead of the easement is.
The other thing you'll probably have to look at is, is snow removal of our snow storage spaces. When you get into your plan.
Lighting and.
Dumpster, dumpster locations, lighting.
What's, um, what's on, what's on, is that just decorated? Where these windows are?
Yes, just decorated.
Okay.
Yeah, so, um, I don't know if it's a good time to segue into, we've got a couple of different. Design schemes for the gables of the building, there are three different schemes that we're gonna give you tonight to just pick around. Um, I can hand those out to you now if you like.
I mean, we can say we like it, but it's not binding.
Yes, yeah. And we'll just leave these in these packets for the folks that aren't here.
Well, if we don't like any of them.
So you see page one is the depiction of. Um, what's referred to as a jerkin head or commonly a duck gable, which is depicted in the. Three D rendering in front of the packet submitted, page two, the middle page is more of a. A gabled, a window within the larger gable, um, and then page three, the back page shows it more as a little shed roofed dormer. Um, we in the office like the. Dutch gable, so to speak, and you'll see it in the three D view, the way that, that little. Top of the gable gets clipped off, kind of like mimics some of the slopes of the mountains around, it seems to fit in pretty well, but. We can see any of these three options being quite fitting in the town, making a, a nice building here in Lincoln.
Just one of the things that, in, in the other. Just one of the things that, in, in the other features, if you look around, you'll see the couple of those. That like Riverwalk has done um here at the town. The library, the fire department, I mean, they all have that type of, you'll know what was a couple of those. That was one of the. One of the things that the town tried to keep with, with some of the other buildings that we've been, I don't know if it's good. Doing anything with that, but that's certainly.
Worth looking at.
Last entrance, is this just to, to the rooms? Right here, would that go down to the lobby?
That's where um Main Street has an entry in and then you take the elevator down to the lobby level, that's a level below the backside.
Okay, but you're anticipating, well, if you're trying to enter from the backside, probably very few on Main Street.
Right, that, that Main Street entrance really pedestrian. Um, and then there is some refinement and tweaking to be done on the design, that entry probably may not be that prominent, maybe it will, we're not sure yet.
Your pedestrian circulation and, and maybe some um. If you're gonna have any outdoor amenities. Picking tables and stuff like that. They put in a uh, well, gazebo, right? You know, if you're gonna have any things that are outside, how, you know. Your pedestrian circulation might be. Interesting thought to have.
Yeah, that'll be the next level of development where brand standard has a bunch of outdoor spaces that are, that occur between the pool and the lobby that, outer space. Um, they put a little barbecue kind of pit out there and they do an event for guests. Certain nights of the week, I think signage. Since we've left the building unsigned at the moment, but something like, yeah, there'll be a whole other conversation.
Well, except for um, the last few we've done, we've forgotten about the signage where we put it on.
Right.
So it's really supposed to be part of the site plan review. You know, we don't, we don't. Over twenty feet high on Main Street. Signage is part of the signing ordinance, it's like, okay, it's on signage and you know. And we're working on it, we're trying to update it, but we haven't finished yet.
And you're probably want to get, do you know the town engineer's? Right, corporate, so you get all those information so you can work with him on the water and silver.
It looks like there's. Very minimal space between your parking and driving areas and the abutters parking easement. Like it looks, but it looks like they're almost touching it at a couple of points. Not sure how snowy removal is gonna work. You know, you push it on to their side and they push it back on to yours or what the elevation difference is, if any, but that looked. Abnormally close.
We have in the past, I mean, down here. That's the one we just reviewed that as part of their approval, they have to remove snow. Right, isn't that, that was part of their approval? So, I mean, you could do. It's a, it's a cost to the company, I'm sure, but it's, they have to remove their snow. Because they didn't have, they're putting such a. Mass on one spot, there was no, there's not any room to store it, so.
Yeah, and you know, in the hotel business, you want people to come and be able to park and come to your hotel.
If you can't, if you start pushing snow into parking. Areas, then you don't have the parking spaces available, so.
Yeah, so there's gonna be a removable component potentially understood. Like bucketed and trucked.
Looks like I have a couple of color schemes too.
Yes, one scheme is um. That you'll see on the front page, there's kind of a yellow cloud or white. It's more traditional New England, a little bit of granite to the base and some accent areas. The other scheme is a red brick and tan and white.
Anyone want to weigh in on that or? What about the material?
Um, materials, this will likely be a. All steel construction building, which means it's non-combustible, so the exterior siding would be like a cementitious clapboard siding. Ideally painted by the manufacturer, so things can bond it onto the cementous siding.
Four, three, ma- maintenance free on the exterior.
Yeah, maintenance free completely, um, new shingles, color, it's up for, you'll see in the yellow scheme, we're showing a greenish shingle, that's kind of a classic. Um, that's up for some conversation. With granite might be. Real granite, or it, or it could be a masonry, there's a couple of masonry products now that look rather similar to granite, they, they're pretty good looking, they come more of a. Uniform dimension.
Uh, I'm assuming it's all sprinkled, it will be all sprinkled and.
Yep, code requires residential use groups, so it tells to be all completely fully sprinkled.
And um, you know, me, me, when I take a look at this. Parking layout. Trying to fit a fire truck turning around in that space, it looks real tight. So you're probably gonna really want to get with the fire chief. Um, because they have some pretty big trucks. That requires some room to turn around.
But the other thing I just want to mention, um, you know, saying there are room and um, we have a land use permit from us. Um, we have the, the, usually the fire chief with the bigger buildings um. Request the state fire marshal's office to do the owning permit process, or the state fire marshal's office.
Okay.
Little seasons back here and through the state fire marshal's office. Uh, the.
Hampton Inn.
The Hampton Inn. Riverwalk, phase nine, can move that to the fire.
Is there any sewer that goes down on Main Street?
There is sewer on the property.
But is it, is it in between?
It, it's not gonna go anywhere. I know, there's another one that ran down back. Who was the one?
There is one on that, but I don't know where it starts.
Yeah, I don't know where it starts either.
Right after we use. Back down around behind town hall view. That's this huge utility east and, yeah, it's the main street, yeah, it's like thirty-five foot.
The last time this board looked at a, at a hotel project and the colors and things. One that, that one person liked, the other one hated, and one that I liked, other people hated. I like the boring old tan beige, and I like the roofs, the roof. Configuration on the, the first set that dropped down. My personal opinion, and if the rest of the board were here, someone would disagree with that, a different color and a different roof, so. So no matter what you bring forward, someone's not gonna, not gonna like it.
The only thing that matters is abutters and. Um, people like that. So, one I've seen is rendering here. Um, the sign that goes, that's just up the street for the. Playhouse, that'll be gone. James Playhouse sign.
Is that on this property?
Yeah, it is.
Okay.
I just had to be looking at it, thinking that, that sign, sorry. That'll be gone.
That's a good question, I can't answer that. Can you discuss it? So there's a, the sign for another business on this piece of property?
They, they, as you know, it's just a temporary situation.
Well, they have an integrated sign plan, that's part of the integrated sign plan. For the tourist attraction, but it's not right on Main Street. You know where the playhouse is? Okay, the playhouse is behind the movie theater. And so, um, you know, there's some jeans playhouse and. It's a, a big draw for, for us. And they, they aim for an integrated sign plan, that was part of the, the sign.
I mean, yeah, it's, that's up to the property owner to.
Right, I just wonder. I had to be looking at it, saying. You're raising, looks to me like you're, you're planning on raising that off of, raising that property up probably. Four or five feet off the existing grade off Main Street.
That perspective rendering is kind of artistic license. If you look at the grading of it, we're pretty well right there at elevation. Eight thirty-one or so. Try to be pretty long, like just a little above right where the eight thirty grade is of Main Street.
Main Street's at eight thirty and, and you're parking at what?
Which park?
The front, the front elevation of the building, ground level is, it's gonna stay level up in the front. Building construction notes, roofie level. Eight thirty-two.
Yeah, we're still working on that grade, I'd like to, I'd like to get it lower than eight thirty. Yeah, cause Main Street's eight thirty. Right, so that level that's right there at Main Street's gonna be eight thirty-one. You know, right, sort of in that.
Too much lower than the water, Main Street doesn't run in your property.
Oh, and you also have the DOT move after that drain.
I'm sure you'll probably have to have one of those underground.
Yeah, we see the next steps effort tonight would be to go really into all the engineering of. The site drainage, the, like everything you've been discussing, you know, traffic.
Yeah, I mean, you're gonna have. I see traffic as being an issue for you. Um, on Cooper Memorial Drive. So the only way in and out of this property is through Cooper Memorial Drive, my correct? So when South Peak, I mean, when Loom's operational. South Peak parking lot is full. And the one thousand eighteen house lots are up there and they're coming across that roadway. And you're trying to get out on Cooper Memorial, it's gonna be tough. I mean. How many parking spaces are you at? Hundred ninety-five? We put a hundred ninety-five cars, when they, when, when Loom's letting out or when they're going into park, it's gonna be tough for you.
He'll be up in the rooftop, right?
Well. My, my point is that. I guess you can't. That's an easy one, if it gets too bad, you couldn't work with. Work out to have another way to get out on to Main Street or to get out on to. One way in, one way out, it's, it's tough.
I don't think the state's gonna allow anything else. But any other access out on. They don't, they don't.
They don't care.
They'd rather have you come along to a side road like Cooper Memorial and go out that way. I think the, the tough part is gonna be getting from Cooper Memorial on Main Street during busy time.
Oh, but, but that's what I'm saying, so it, it's gonna back up and anyone wants out of the hotel. Is not gonna get in there unless they take a right and go through, then it says and come out that way.
And get stuck at the next intersection, yeah. Something that is. Anyone have anything else? You have anything else for us?
Oh, can you um, email me the thing we just scanned about?
I will. No, I don't have anything further. I think we've got the aesthetic going in a. Appropriate direction. And um, sounds like we're ready to. Take a stand and train out of the station.
Hope to see you here soon.
Great, all right, thank you so much.
Dave, we got a drainage problem between Raymond Burgland and Eleventh School Street, map one thirteen, lot ninety-eight, and Jane Ludwig. From Pleasant Street, map one fifteen, lot ninety-two, and plans for solution from planning board meeting of June eighth, twenty twenty-two, and August ten, twenty twenty-two.
I'm moving the, we both want to still next meeting, cause.
All right, has Jane or anybody called in? I know Burgland said he couldn't be here. He sent the letter.
Oh, he's given something this letter. It, it just included in that, um, presentation that he.
Yeah, like I said, last meeting. Um, I would say that we should include his. Email in the minutes from the meeting because he pretty much addressed. Um, the concerns and the two outstanding issues that need to be resolved between the two. Parties.
Certainly, it's a one, one-sided. One-sided explanation of a two-sided story.
Right, I know, but they, they've chosen, I mean, he's, they've chosen not to show up, I.
He, all right, he's chosen not to show up and neither has the butter.
So, right, right, but he's updated the board.
He's updated verbally, but that doesn't mean the butter. Agrees with what he says. So, I mean, without having both parties here, it's, it's kind of hard to. You know what I mean? I'm not really happy that, 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 we, we come here to, we have all this information, but they don't want to take time to show up either, either, either or. So, I mean.
Well, I think Mr. Burgland is overseas, that's where he lives and works.
Right, right.
And he had to get on a plane for his job, so.
I understand that, that's not, that, that's not the issue, the issue is that. And the butter has taken concern. Well, I think, you know. Property here, but, you know, he doesn't want to show up, he said he was gonna correct it. Now, and, and I, as. The butter hasn't shown up either, so, I mean, it, it's not, it doesn't seem like a fair thing for the planning board to keep. Considering or reconsidering.
Right, so should we just, like, just note that need a party attended and the matter is considered and resolved? Or do you want to just give them the courtesy to come next meeting, put them on the agenda?
Well, what if you tabled it and, and talked to them to bring it?
One of the others should show up, I mean, if butter shows up.
It's really up to them to, to resolve this, I mean. Yeah, you know, this, this wasn't a planning board approved. Situation, it's not like we're looking back at a site plan or a land use plan.
Well, I think that. From what I've gotten from it, it, it seems to me to be a. Stormwater issue on the property, and that's why I, from what I've gathered so far, that's what the, that's what the, a butter. Seems to be having the issue with. So it, it does involve the town, and when we talked to the owner. He says, I was going for, he said, I'm gonna take care of this, it's gonna. But it doesn't seem like it's been taken care of because the butter's come back and said. It hasn't been taken care of. He, he hasn't done anything, I mean, he says he's gonna do it and, but he's always, he's out of the country or he said, and I understand all that. But he has a responsibility, once he says he's gonna do something to me to get it done. You know, because the butter thought they were gonna get it done, so. To me that. Say all you want, but until you do something, it doesn't mean anything.
Okay, Cal, well, Cal wants to say something.
These are the, the, the two things that I understand from both parties. Is the location of the fence and movement of the propane tanks. Propane tanks are, that are attached to the Luth House are on Mr. Burgland's property. Uh, Mr. Burgland, um, wants them removed off his property. And as part of the deal, um, the fence. But in order for the fence to be workable for one of the parties. He wants to, he wants it to be seven point five inches on this property instead of twelve inches on his property. The other parties want it to be twelve inches onto his property, and they don't want to move the propane tanks, so that's where they are stuck.
What happened to all the water issues? I thought the water was the big issue here.
The water is the issue, but in order to, to scheme to fix it, includes the moving of the propane tanks.
I'm staying moving propane.
Are they relocating, or they just moving them so they can do the work and then putting them back?
Oh, relocated.
Relocated, okay.
But they're on somebody else's property, that, that, that's a matter for the two of butters, the two people to figure out whether they.
That's where they're stuck, these two issues in paragraph one, is where they're stuck. So.
Well, the fence. The fences. The propane tank is something that, that, the, the two people have to either go to court for or, or take care of on their own. This, the fencing issues. The twelve inches is one argument, that, that, I don't know where, where the guy got that again.
The planning board could weigh.
We could weigh, but, but the requirement says twelve inches, and it's for maintenance, and so that you can maintain. Both sides of the fence, you only have twelve inches, it's really not a whole hell of a lot.
He doesn't have to put up a fence.
He doesn't have to.
Okay, he's putting that up as a courtesy to that neighbor. So if they don't agree with the seven inches, they don't put up a fence.
Right, and then, and then the only issue left is the, is the water issue.
Well, I think that. Moving those two things are part of solving the water issue. And I don't understand how it works exactly, but that's how, so where they're stuck. And I think that that they wanted somehow even the resolve, which I'm not really clear that that's word than your jurisdiction.
I don't think, I think the only thing we. Have any kind of jurisdiction on is the stormwater or the water.
But that would only be if they're going to disturb, and so fifty percent of the water of the lot.
Well, if they, if they dug the whole foundation out. And regraded it. Then, then it disturbed more than fifty percent of that lot, because that lot is not.
Even I don't know that, I mean, they have to have. I, I understand that one party says yes, the other party says no.
Well. I like to say that my grandmother used to live there, so I can tell you that. It's a small lot.
Yeah, and so isn't the one with the water problem.
Yeah.
And they've added on to that building since day one. And increased the water runoff from roofs and driveways and.
Yeah.
Impermeable area. Um, I don't think it's hard, I, I just wonder, what is our jurisdiction over a, a naval dispute with, with. Like, two properties that have increased or changed or whatever, maybe? Changed.
I mean, I think the only thing to. In my mind, the only thing we should be looking at. Is the water issue, and say, did they disturb more than, cut back then it was, what was it, fifteen thousand square feet?
Fifty percent.
Fifty percent. That they disturbed more than fifty percent of the lot, if they didn't disturb more than fifty percent of the lot. Then the water is not an issue, but if they disturbed more than fifty percent of the lot, then they should have gone through site plan review. If they, if they disturbed more than fifty percent of the lot, it did not go through site plan review.
What's the plan review, they, the stormwater management?
Stormwater management.
Triggered.
Triggered.
Correct.
And it's not clear that, that they're only, I mean, you'd have to have somebody. You know, survey out the area, determine which areas disturbed and which isn't, because they can't agree on what area was disturbed and which area. So. Somebody, you know, I don't think it's the town's responsibility.
I guess, even if they dig up the whole foundation and just put it back, it's, the impermeable surface stays the same. Doesn't change.
Well, you disturbed the whole, by lifting the house up and disturbing all that, taking that, that house up and putting that foundation in. You know, disturbed that area. There's no, there's no doubt about it. You can't dig down, you can't dig down six or eight feet and not disturb an area. If you look at our, our definition of disturbance, it's disturbed. It's considered disturbed, and that's, like I said, that's where I think our only, I don't care about the fence. I don't care about propane tank, the only thing I care about is if they disturbed. More than the required amount or the required amount, then it should have come in for stormwater.
You know, on June eighth, they said, you know, the preference would be for them to work it out themselves, and I think that's.
Well, we, we had that, and, and, and that's why we're back at it, because. This gentleman said, look. I want to be a good neighbor, I, I want to get this thing done, and I'm gonna get it done, and that was, I don't know how long ago we said that, but it keeps. His actions aren't.
Okay. So, why don't we put it on next meeting?
And say if they don't come in, we're done.
Not come in, we're gonna be done with it, I mean.
I'm okay with that.
Okay. I, I would take the opposite approach. They're not here, we don't deal with it. And we want, if they request to come in for another meeting, and request to be on the agenda, we'll put them on the agenda, but I don't think we should just put them on the agenda and tell them to come in, it's, it's. Why don't, I, I don't understand. Why don't we split the difference and ask James or the butter, if they want to come in on the next meeting, but. Not like necessarily put it on the agenda. I, I would, I would either ask both. Okay, well, ask both parties. Not one or the other.
Why would say this, okay? Why would say the playing board? Is not gonna take up this matter. Until both parties can be pressed.
That's fine, I like that.
How's that? And that way there, we're not wasting our time, you know what I mean?
I mean, last meeting, we couldn't hear it because we didn't have a forum, that's, that's the only reason.
I understand that, but that kind of stuff happens.
Right.
Just like they're not here to, so.
Right. Yeah, I believe they were both here last meeting.
Yeah, I couldn't, I.
It's all right.
That was a nice square meeting, I just, I didn't know.
Yeah, you didn't make out that well.
No, I was not happy.
All right.
I need more than just kind of playing important.
Moving on, capital improvement program from twenty twenty three to twenty twenty eight.
I'll make a motion, we open a public hearing for the capital. I'll make a motion where you approve the capital.
Is there any public discussion? Yeah, there's two people on the zone.
Well, there is.
Um, Carol or Kathleen, do you have any comments about the? CIP, the capital improvement plan?
For all my information. The three of us are on it, oh, no, you're not.
No. All right.
I'll make a motion that we quote public hearing.
Second. All those, oh, second. All in favor?
Hi.
I.
Are you carrying?
All right, is there any further discussion?
I'll make.
You know, he hasn't seen it, so.
Yes, it's gone through.
Yeah, I had it months ago. Okay.
I'll make a motion where you approve the capital.
Um, capital improvement program.
Program for twenty twenty two, twenty twenty three.
Twenty twenty eight.
Oh, this is twenty.
You said twenty twenty three to twenty twenty eight.
Okay.
It's, so you said. So all in favor?
I, I.
All right. Is there any public participation? I had one thing. I'm not public, I had one thing.
All right, so. Carol or Kathleen, do you have anything you want to add?
All right.
I'm all set, thank you.
All right, is there any other business? Just a note. From the court update from the New Hampshire Municipal Association. Municipalities can adopt sign codes that impose more stringent regulations or prohibitions. For off-premise signs as opposed to on-premise signs.
That's a big, that's a big.
City of Austin versus Reagan National US Supreme Court Doc. So, so we can have different regulations for on and off premise signs. But you can't read the sign to know. I don't get it, but, but we can do it, because I have previously said we can't. Read it to tell, right, which, which comes from the, the initial. So you really have to read the case to really decipher what the hell they're talking about.
I just thought. I think it ends up, if someone wants to take it, that's where it's all going anyway.
I, I think that, that we could leave or reintegrate off-premise signs. If we wanted to, yeah, um.
But as Carol said too, like, that was a good comment that Carol was, you know, we, we should be. Working towards having the signs. When they come in, rather than waiting and then having Carol deal with it as an afterthought, you know, and saying, look, bring all your signage in now. You know, and then we can deal with it one way or the other, so it helps you, and it doesn't get, it gets done right up front, and it's not all this, when did this happen? Now we want to do that.
When, when did that decision come down, if I might ask? April. Twenty first, okay. And of course, when this is all done, it'll, we'll be right back where we started before the Gilbert decision, once it circles around. Good day. All right, is nothing else, is there a motion for adjournment? All in favor?
I. I.
Not too bad, not even eight o'clock.
All right, thank you.
Time to welcome party. I know, pop drop, thank goodness.